Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the Citroplanning Board, Thursday, October 9th, 2025. Counting the select we're hearing will be here in town hall. We have a closing agenda, it's nearly second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
First, our gen based at protective accessory dwelling site plan in New Perfect, 45 Turner Road.
Okay.
I move here for that?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. Fine, because your clients is on my show, right?
One of my clients, not alone, is behind me.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, so let's have.
Okay, great, so Jeff, Delisi, Ornerberger, Delisi, and Harris. So here are my clients, both online and behind me, as well as with our architect, Jason Deal. I think, yes, Jeff Han is also on there, he was our surveyor and engineer. So quickly, the property is located at 45 Turner Road. It's located in the Residence 3 zoning district. The property itself, the lot, that means the lot, prime to the width, all exceed the width, all exceed the zoning dimensions in town. The existing buildings on the property, there are two of them, one is the dwelling and one is an accessory building, which is currently used as a garage. The dwelling conforms to setbacks, except for the front yard, and the detached accessory building fully conforms to all setbacks. The gross floor area of the existing building is 1,524 square feet. Measured to the inside of the exterior walls. The proposed ADU would be located in the detached structure. It will contain one bedroom. Be used by my client's parents, who will be helping out with their grandchildren. Specifically, the concept here is to construct 245 square foot addition to the rear of the existing detached accessory building, you can see that on the plan. That addition could be combined with an interior addition, and the aggregate area of the ADU would be 741 square feet, measured to the inside and exterior walls. That represents about 48.6% of the gross floor area of the existing primary dwelling, which obviously is less than half, and also less than 900 square feet. So it's gonna be fully compliant with all dimensional setback requirements, it's not gonna have any need for a new curb cut. The parking is sufficient, we require spaces, and we have four on-site. The addition, the work to the structure was really designed to be almost hidden from view, from the street viewpoint, it's towards the rear, and the ridge of the addition goes no higher than the current ridge of the existing building. It was designed really to blend in, and that's exactly what it achieves. Our clients have spoken with the butters on both sides, who have been nothing but gracious and wish us luck, and I happen to note that there's a fence in the rear, which then fully kind of encloses in the backyard and the side yards here. Utility, the property is on Town Sewer, Town Water, it will continue to be, there's a proposed tee for those lines, the existing conditions, and that really is pretty much it. It's a good, it's a good, exactly what is intended by the project.
Very pretty house, like, we drive by to see all of the houses, and I get to see all the, this is a very pretty house, so I have nothing else to report. Well, just make sure you take care of the job, I can watch you do this, you have all these accessory buildings.
I know, my kids are not gonna take care of it.
And I don't have.
Maybe my dog?
Well, this is nice, does anybody have questions, Mark?
No. And, no.
Okay, we are ready. I move to make the following comments in fact. This is 45 Turner Road, site plan administrative review, set for new government. One, on September 3rd, 2025, David and Andrea Warres, apply for accessory dwelling of an ADU, site plan administrative review, 45 Turner Road. To according to the deed, the property at 45 Turner Road is owned by David and Andrea Warres, both owners signed the application for site plan administrative review, 28 year. Free base term of floor plans submitted by the applicant, the floor area of proposed plan ADU will be approximately 741 square feet. The principal dwelling is 1,500.4 square feet, according to the applicant's application, area calculated from the inside of the exterior wall dimension. This meets the size requirements of 530.1A of the zoning bylaw, ADUs, as the bylaw allows 50% of the gross floor area of principal dwelling are 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. For the ADU, will need a complete separate housekeeping unit, there will be only one accessory dwelling unit on the lot. Five, the ADU is subordinate to the existing single family home. Six, the property is in the residential R3 zoning district. Seven, the proposed ADU will have access through two doors. One on the side of the ADU and one in the rear of the ADU. Eight, at least one private off-street parking space is provided for the ADU, and the ADU is located on that .5 miles from the rail station, ferry terminal or bus station. Nine, the ADU will be serviced by Town Water and Town Sewer, DPW requirements for water and sewer connections will be met. Ten, the applicant meets the standards of the Citrozone bylaw for ADU. Eleven, pursuant to General Laws Chapter 48, Section 5 and 6, the proposed ADU will be subject to the proposed amendments to the Citrozone bylaw regarding ADUs, notice of which was first published December 26th, 2024, and was duly considered by the Citroen Annual Town Meeting on April 14th, 2025. The town meeting passed the bylaw by a majority vote, the applicant wishing to proceed with this application prior to final approval of the bylaw, of the bylaw by the Attorney General's Office on the pending bylaw, has applied for site plan review. This is second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
I move to approve the site plan administrative review of an ADU at 45 Turner Road with the following conditions. Except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall be subject to the gap agreement form to architectural plans by Jason E. Beal, Jason E. Beal, AIA, for the additions and renovations to the residence of Andrea and Andrea Warres, 45 Turner Road, Citroen Mass, dated 8/16/25, consisting of sheets. A1, proposed given out a block plan, A2, foundation plan, A3, first floor plan, A4, second floor plan, A5, roof plan, A6, residential exterior elevations, A7, residence exterior elevations, A8, detached garage exterior elevations, A9, ADU foundation plan, A10, ADU first floor plan, ADU roof plan, and existing second floor plan, A12, ADU roof plan, A13, ADU exterior elevations, block plan, 45 Turner Road, Citroen Mass, Conrissol, IV, 39-6-13, by Atlantic Coast Engineering LLC, dated April 21st, 2025. Two, the ADU cannot be used for a short-term rental unit as defined by the zoning bylaw. Our restricted covenant shall be recorded against the property to that effect prior to any occupancy permit for the accessory dwelling unit. The covenant shall run until the town and be enforceable by the town through injunctive relief and with the property owner required to pay the town's reasonable legal fees and costs for successful enforcement of any violation of the restricted covenant. Three, no further expansion of the ADU floor area is allowed without further review by the planning board. Four, the owner is not required to live in either the principal or accessory dwelling unit, the owner shall own both the principal and ADU. Five, all requirements of Board of Health, Building Department, Zoning Board Appeals, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the ADU. Six, the ADU shall conform to all applicable standards in the Building, Plumbing, Electrical, Mechanical, Fire and Health Codes and Bylaws. Seven, water and sewer connection must be all requirements of the DPW Water Division and DPW Subdivision for the ADU dwelling. Eight, any lighting installed shall be downlighting, not to shed light on a flooding properties. Nine, construction work shall not begin prior to Saturday 8:00 AM, weekdays and 8:00 AM on Saturdays, and shall cease no later than 7:00 PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or on legal state and federal holidays. Construction includes the idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. No parking of any vehicles shall occur on the public way. Ten, runoff from the proposed ADU shall not be increased from the property. Eleven, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silk socks shall be used as necessary along with a stable, stabilized construction entrance. Well, the decision must be reported at the registry of deeds prior to a building permit issued. Good second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Very much. One down. At 6:45, we have a protective accessory dwelling site plan, apartment, a 20 meeting house, lady, Patricia and John Adams. I mean, let's check Patricia and John Adams. I love how we even see you.
I'm glad that you're not ready for half. Thanks.
I'm ready.
We are looking to add an existing space in our home designated with no construction. We have a five-bedroom house on South Lane in Citroen, and we bought the house in 2016. The family room downstairs, we envisioned could be used for my mother-in-law and father-in-law, and we had, they were living in the house, and you have space for our family and caring for them, so my father-in-law moved out about a month ago, and it's a care facility, so now it's basically empty, filled with like, empty, designated empty room, which is what it had been used for, already had an existing bathroom, and we bought the house, it had a wet bar, dish net, same dishwasher, different facilities, and it has an alsatik heat rest.
I commend you for coming in to make it a legal ADU, thank you so very, very much.
So the concern we have is the building department required that we put the door in our garage. Our garage has a large stone foundation, one side of the garage has a pipe that takes a faucet to the outside, has an outdoor shower on the side, and the other side has high-end things which can easily be removed, but the stone is, is quite large and high. And when, as a child, they were living with us, they could have gone through the outside exit, they could have gone through the garage, the garage roll, or they could have a whole house generator, they also could have gone up the stairs, because there's a central staircase that we use to enter and exit the house. So there is a viable additional exit for a tenant to go up the main stairs and out the front door, or through the back, like we ourselves. There's also a storage room facility that, we have some exercise bikes there, so again, we would be able to go through the garage, or we could go back up the stairs and out the front door, if there was a case of a fire. So we're asking for consideration of not putting the door in, because it's a cost, and because there are other alternatives for exiting the property.
Let's go back up, what do you have?
Do you have an existing six-bedroom subject, and you have a five-bedroom house with adding that one to a viable subject requirement?
That's my application, application, that's what we will do.
I did send an email to the building department, but we still haven't got that yet.
I'm not surprised. Do you have a picture right there?
Right, yeah. And the actual state law, which I'm considering with me, does not actually require two exits, it just maintain a separate entrance, and there isn't, and it's to the outside. And, and if there was a fire, you could put a kitchen or a furnace, that is completely on the opposite side of any of the subject fees, and right adjacent to where the sleeping area is.
And this is a walkout basement?
Yeah, there's no steps that get in or out of the basement area. So they don't, they're like, it's basically, yeah.
Right, it's a window.
Yes, we have windows, but the building.
They have eight windows all the way across the airboard.
The building department didn't like, the windows were here, and then the doors at the end of the windows. But there's eight, right, windows all adjacent to each other, which are also, when I submitted that petition, I listed four ways to exit the property.
I have no problem, because that's how my house is set up, not that I haven't ADU, but hey.
They hadn't said it was a family room, and we were looking for a house for, to share with my mother-in-law and father-in-law, and with Alice's birthday.
Well, Chair Lambert, to my knowledge, Ms. Joseph did pass on the building commissioner's recommendation to the applicant, and as of today, the planning office did not receive any word from the applicant or the building commissioner regarding a request for consideration to withdraw that condition. But the motion, I believe, the draft, does have that condition, so we'll have to figure that out.
Do you want to give this?
I don't know, I'm fine with it, it's just, and you know, it gets to me.
It's a walkout.
It's a walkout, and it's still in my house.
We can have this in here.
Yeah.
Tell them, who's gonna show up to make sure that it stays?
We can just also take that.
Take it up. All right, are you ready?
I just want to, I can commend you, thank you for coming in, do the right thing. Thank you very much, that's what the waters for. Are you ready? I think I'm ready. Okay. Thank you. I move to make the following comments in fact. One, on September 10th, 2025, Patricia and John Adams apply for accessory dwelling in the ADU site plan administrative review, the ADU is in the principal dwelling on the property at 20 meeting house lane. According to the deed, the property at 20 meeting house lane is owned by Patricia and John Adams, both owners signed the application for site plan administrative review of the ADU. Free base term of floor plans submitted by the applicant, the floor area of proposed ADU, within a single tenant home, will be approximately 800.3 square feet, the principal dwelling is approximately 3,210 square feet, with the existing finished basement not included in that number, as they converted to the ADU according to the applicant's application, with the area calculated for inside and exterior and welcome dimensions and essential calculation. This meets the found requirements of 530.1A of the zoning bylaw, the ADUs, and the bylaw allows 50% of the gross floor area from the principal dwelling are 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. For the ADU will be a complete separate housekeeping unit, and there will be only one accessory dwelling unit on the lot. Five, the ADU is subordinate to the existing single family home. Six, the property is in the residential R2 zoning district. Seven, the proposed ADU will have access through two doors, one will have access through the center settlement. I can propose, indeed, will have access through two doors, one on the side of the ADU and one into the garage. A man door in the garage will be required to be installed, as the garage door cannot qualify as an exit.
The garage door can qualify, it's taken on.
Going to the building area.
So I'm saying, they come up the stairs, that we access to the house, and access through the front door, so.
But there are two entrances.
Yes, and we say. Yeah, then we have a front door, we also have two doors that straighten on from the main floor of the house to the back deck. Just like on the second floor, they would have to come downstairs and go over the back door, so.
Right, so the second exit leaves through the front door.
And one through the front door of the house.
Yes.
How's that sound?
That's one.
Okay. Eight. At least one.
So I would soon be boarding.
It's going to say, through two doors, one on the side of the ADU and one through the front door of the main house, thank you. Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Eight, at least one private off-street parking space is provided in the ADU, as the ADU is located within .5 miles from the rail station, ferry terminal, or bus station. Nine, the ADU will be serviced by Town Water and private subject system, the DPW requirements and water connections will be met. Ten, the applicant, application meets the standards of the Citrozone bylaw for ADU. Eleven, pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5 and 6, the proposed ADU will be subject to the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw regarding ADUs, notice of which was first published December 26th, 2024, and was duly considered by the Citroen Annual Town Meeting on April 14th, 2025. The town meeting passed the bylaw by a majority vote, applicant wishing to proceed with this application prior to final approval of the bylaw by the Attorney General's Office on the pending bylaw, has applied for site plan review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So if you move to amend.
Move as amended.
Second.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the site plan administrative review of an ADU at 20 meeting house lane for general condition. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall be substantially, shall substantially conform to plans submitted with the application, including our mortgage inspection plan, 20 meeting house lane, dated 7/17/2012, all high sketches for second floor, first floor, and finished basement, 20 meeting house lane, update. Two, the ADU cannot be used for short-term rental unit as defined in the zoning bylaw. Our restricted covenant shall be recorded against the property to that effect, to any occupancy permit for the accessory dwelling unit. The covenant shall run to the town and be enforceable by the town through injunctive relief, with the property owner required to pay the town's reasonable legal fees and costs for successful enforcement of any violation of the restricted covenant. Three, no further expansion of the ADU floor area is allowed without further review of the planning board, for the owner is not required to live in either the principal or accessory dwelling, the owner shall own both the principal and ADU, on all requirements of the Board of Health, Building Department, Zoning Board Appeals, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the ADU. Six, the ADU shall conform to all applicable standards in the Building, Plumbing, Electrical, Mechanical, Fire and Health Codes and Bylaws. Seven, water must be all requirements of the DPW Water Division for the ADU dwelling, any lighting installed shall be downlighting, not to shed light on flooding properties. Nine, construction work shall not begin prior to seven, eight, and eight days, and ending on Saturdays, and shall cease no later than 7:00 PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal state and federal holidays. Construction includes the idling of vehicles to the voluntary site, and all other construction activities, no parking of any vehicles, shall occur on the public way. Ten, runoff from the proposed ADU shall not be increased from the property. Eleven, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silk socks shall be used as necessary along with stabilized construction entrance. Twelve, the decision must be reported at the registry of deeds prior to building permit being issued. Thirteen.
Can you just read it as it's, for the record, as it's dated?
It's the title.
Yes.
A man door must be added in the garage.
That is, that's correct, a man door is required, yeah.
Okay.
A man door is the type of door that the building.
It should be, well, we are also.
You know, I know, but just to read how it's written, and then amend it.
A man door must be added in the garage, means the rest.
So you need to amend?
Oh.
Second.
I'm giving you second.
So you're gonna strike it?
Yeah.
If you look, strike up number 13. Thank you. A second, has amended?
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
You all have a very lovely home, you're not having a lot of guests, right, or how it is?
Do we have to, we're not doing any construction, we have to file for building permit, or how do we go from here?
You're all done. You're all, it exists. It all exists, right, we just have to file with registry of deeds. We don't do it in registry.
So you will get a decision, the board tonight will sign the decision that they just approved, okay? And then you will be contacted by the town planner, that you can go pick it up from the town clerk's office, and then you bring it to the registry of deeds, but there's a 20-day appeal period.
Okay.
Great, but that will be.
It goes with your deed.
Yeah, okay, great. I appreciate the time that I think of some of you.
Your bylaws, 74, you know. I'd like to make sure that, um. Somebody was protecting, you just tell them, why the site plan review for 74, can I override? And I'm waiting for Mr. O'Meara. Yes. Mr. O'Meara, President, I owe you.
What do you owe?
I owe, thank you. I just have one question before we start. So I went to open this house like we all do at classes, now, and because I'm creating in and I, if there is a number of the house.
Is it, sorry.
I know, is there a? This is where it's cheap.
Yes, there is.
Where, we've been, we've been found it.
My house, looking for that too.
Okay, but there you go.
On the other side, so we, there's a long driveway, a long driveway.
And it's on the house?
I believe it's on the house, and front door.
We're gonna have to have it down by the street. But.
Down by the street, okay.
I'll do that, I'll see, but it's not.
That makes sense.
We, we decided that was the house, because you see, I was gonna.
Okay, yeah.
So why don't you tell us what is going on, who's your source for this?
Oh, my client wants to convert her downstairs existing into an ADU. She's gonna be installing a new kitchen, and one half of the garage, it's a two-car garage. There are gonna be two needs to be addressed, one through the new kitchen and the garage. There will be, and it sounds like that last one, it's gonna be the front door, so the split stairs, and they're gonna convert that at the common second, I mean, to address. And then, um, no change in the footprint, we're gonna have to put fire tech X, you know, five eights, oh boy, we have a garage area of lots. And I'm speaking for her, because she got in running a little challenge, but I do believe, I don't have anything but we're voted by architects. Okay, so you guys have the other information?
We have other information, this is a very strange, right?
Sorry, what? Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just put the number back down.
Yeah.
Yeah, really hard, right? Like I said, we got, I got.
I couldn't even Zillow it.
Well.
Was on Zillow, I usually Zillow my projects.
We can do that, it works out. So, Miss Trisaw understands all that she has to do?
Yes.
Because ADU requires all fine, step, and conditions for a home, ADU will be subject to payments, where our house is on top of shore, we have a, we have a, we have a parking space, we have a driveway, we live in the middle of the house, so, obviously, that might, more than it says. I know that Miss Trisaw is a little frustrating, because she took a long time to get us started, but once we sat down, everybody got all on the same page, and has moved out of town there, I know that she, I thought, I think before she hired you, she had come to us and played, and we told you, like, so give us a little, what, what, what happened, but.
This is good for me, too.
So, it will, but we will, we do approve the ADU, the applicant, you have to file within 14 days, just in case it's somebody else following. It probably means it's a 20-day period for appeal, most likely, the Friday day will be October 15th, and if there's no appeal, the applicant will pick up a two or three copies of the decision, which will decide the date, so, okay, that's, she does that the day she's back.
Yes, anytime after, the 21st day after October 15th, she's able to come pick it up, as long as there's no appeal.
Yeah.
The town clerk keeps track, there's no.
So you'll be notified?
From the town.
Anything else? Anybody else? Anybody online? Are you gonna be got it? I just saw the J D, it's probably right on, off this door. I know. Give you a moment to sit. I move to make the following comments in fact. One, on September 15th, 2025, I'm in a chase on, applying for accessory dwelling in ADU. Site plan administrative review of an ADU within a principal dwelling on the property of seventy four pinot drive. According to, according to the deed, the property of seventy four pinot drive is owned by our name Chase on. She is, she is on her sound application for site plan administrative review for the ADU. Three day plan of floor plan included by the applicant. The floor area of the proposed ADU within a single family home will be approximately six hundred seventy square feet. The principal dwelling is approximately one thousand five hundred point four square feet with the existing finished level that will not include in that number as it's being converted to the ADU. And the areas calculated from inside or exterior development and the assesses calculation. This meets the side requirements of five thirty point one A of zoning bylaw of the ADU. For the ADUs, as the bylaw allows, fifty percent of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling of nine hundred square feet will generally swallow. For the ADU will be a complete separate housekeeping unit, and there will be only one accessory dwelling given on the law. Uh, the ADU is subordinate, subordinate to the existing single family home. Six, the property is in the residential I of the zoning district and water resource protection district. Seven, the proposed ADU will have access to two doors, one on the garage side of the ADU and one going to the main floor of the house. This is exactly what we did with the other one.
Yeah.
Seven.
That's what I was saying. Very similar.
Mm-hmm.
Similar but different, and, but you've made your decision.
Yeah.
So move on, moving on.
This one is, this is. Five.
Eight.
The other one? The other one will come under discussion with the town planner, I'm sure, when it's twenty.
Yeah, I'm sure though. Eight, at least one private off street parking space is provided for the ADU. The ADU is located within point five miles from a commuter rail station, very terminal, a bus station, so no parking required. Then the ADU will be served, serviced by town war and town sewer, DPW requirements, water and sewer connections will be met. Ten, the application meets the standards of the situat zoning bylaw for an ADU. Eleven, pursuant to general law, chapter forty A's, section five and six, the proposed ADU will be subject to proposed amendments to the situat zoning bylaw regarding the ADU's notice of which was first published December twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, and was duly considered by the situat annual town meeting on April fourteenth, twenty twenty five. The town meeting passed the bylaw by a majority vote. The applicant wishing to proceed with this application prior to final approval of the bylaw by the attorney general's office on the pending bylaw has applied for the site thing, or site review. Second. All in favor?
No, I wanted to add, can we add, I'm just, I'm getting a lot of my network.
That would be under, um, conditions, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, I'll say to go.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're not, oh, you have to do you. She was checking the longer on.
Right, okay. I'm also approve of the site plan administrative review of an ADU at seventy four pinot drive with the following conditions. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall substantially conform to plans submitted by the application including sketch plan for seventy four pinot drive dated three nineteen twenty four by Merrill Corporation, architectural plans for the proposed ADU at seventy four pinot drive by Kerry Pierce Architects dated September eleventh, twenty twenty five, consisting of sheet A one lower level plans and A two upper level plans. Two, the ADU cannot be used for a short term rental unit as defined by the zoning bylaw. A restrictive covenant shall be recorded against the property to that effect prior to any occupancy permit in the accessory dwelling unit. The covenant shall run to the town and be enforced by the town. Injunctive relief and the property owner required to pay the town's reasonable legal fees and costs for successful enforcement of any violation of a restrictive covenant. Three, no further expansion of the ADU floor plan is allowed without further review by the county. Four, the owner is not required to live in either the principal or accessory dwelling unit. The owner shall own both the principal and ADU. By all requirements of the board of health, building department, zoning board, appeals, private and public works, fire department and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the ADU. Six, the ADU shall conform to all applicable standards in the building plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire and health codes and bylaws. Seven, water and sewer connection must meet all requirements of the DPW, water division and DPW sewer division for the ADU dwelling. Eight, any lighting installed shall be downlighted and not shed light on abutting properties. Nine, construction work shall not begin prior to seven A M. A. M. A. M. A. Days and eight A M. On Saturdays and shall cease no later than seven P M. Or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal state and federal holidays. Construction includes the idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site and other construction activities. No parking of any vehicles shall occur on the public way. Ten, runoff from the proposed ADU shall not be increased from the property. Eleven, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation or leaving the site during construction. Silk socks shall be used as necessary along the stabilized, stabilization entrance number twelve. Number, house number.
It's invisible for the street.
Must be visible for the street. Thirteen, the decision must be recorded at the registry of deeds prior to a building permit being issued.
Second.
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
All set.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. On the favor. Now, what we're gonna do is return surety, a surety.
All right, who's the surety go?
Let's go with Mr. Larson.
So you have a motion?
Aye.
Can you recede your packet, the letter petition?
Yeah.
Right. I'm hope to return fifty thousand dollars surety plus accumulate interest of approximately six hundred fifty two dollars and sixty two cents for forward fifty thousand six hundred fifty two dollar and sixty two cent being held for the project at ADU as the project is complete.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Larson will be very happy to have that back.
There you go.
Yeah. So, what about the head straight, will we all send here?
Yeah.
Seven twenty, we have an A and R quick, the seventy fourth on the road, we'll see it for that. Mr. Moss, help me. Let's go on that.
Greg Morris, registered student here, more senior, representing the property owner, Walker Family Trust, seventy fourth Old Road. Um, the proposal here is to take the existing property and divide two unbuildable parcels out of the existing house lot. Um, those two parcels should be conveyed to the neighbor. Um, the property itself located within R two zoning district. Um, the existing home, the left front property that has fifty two thousand, sorry, forty three thousand four hundred and ninety six square feet of land. We're not altering the frontage, the frontage on building road that's two hundred and nine point two seven feet. So it means the requirements of zoning bylaw. Parcels A and B, again, are labeled on the land, not as built, the blocks are being conveyed to the property in number one oh seven Peter Dam Road. This does not create any new local lots, it's just based on land that the, that you buy.
Just want to acknowledge.
It's entitled going in more, thank you.
It's a beautiful house, the house I think got infinite floor, we can go over, we're gonna see it. But that was the level two. Why? Yeah, but I have really.
Yes.
No, I have it. Come on. It's just.
All right. I'm hope to endorse as approved not required of a planned land in situ mass entitled approved not required vision of land assessed part of the forty five dash sixteen dash twenty five. Seventy four till the road in situ mass stamped by Jason Scott. B L S of North Central American Company for applicant Y W Walker. Trustee of Walker Family Trust and owner Walker Family Trust. While you know Walker trustee and Dwight Kelly Walker trustee dated September thirty twenty twenty five as the division of the land of tract of land show on the company plan is not a subdivision as every one show of the plan has frontage of at least the distance present required of the situat bylaw on public way of till the road. Or is labeled a parcel, you know, not a building lot added. Any board endorsement of this plan is not in determination of performance in several regulations. Okay.
Do you all say to go?
We need a second.
You got the first one, send it, I don't know you about this forward, July.
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now. So if you want to go here, Pierre, you can pick up the miles.
Please.
Doctor Hunter.
All right.
The last one, I'm pleased.
I think you're the most. Stop now, I'm stronger than her.
Give me the couple cable. Are you all set?
Me?
Yes.
I'm all set.
So we have a seven fifty, we are waiting at the schedule, seven twenty five, so we'll be coming by eight one. It won't be in me and our, for you, everyone's free by summer street and every parkers. So, give the few gentlemen, as they speak.
Good evening, Jeff Delisi, our lawyer, Delisi Harris, uh, and Greg Morris. Uh, and you can get me home a lot sooner than eight o'clock, come on.
Right.
Um, last year, uh, motions to endorse an A and R plan concerning this property. Uh, the board go to two. And as a result of that, uh, we've been stuck in Langport ever since. Uh, the plan before you tonight represents a remedy to the question of whether the lots could be accessed by Summer Street. So, uh, just briefly, the plan before you shows two lots. Lot one with an existing house on it containing about hundred thousand square, I'm sorry, containing about forty six thousand square feet and a hundred and twenty one linear feet on Summer Street, which is a public street. And lot two, which is a vacant lot containing about ninety five thousand square feet, uh, having hundred and fifty five feet of direct linear frontage on Summer Street, of which hundred and fifty five feet, uh, thirty eight or thirty nine feet is wet and a hundred and sixteen feet is upland. So the primary difference between last year's plan and this year's plan is that both lots, uh, now have existing driveways directly on the frontage of each lot, uh, them, demonstrating actual access directly from Summer Street, like I said, which is a public street. Uh, since the tract of land is located partially in situat, partially in Norwell, both towns are required to endorse the plan. The plan cannot be recorded at the registry of deeds absent both towns endorsing it. Uh, Norwell met last night and they made the required findings last night, have their endorsement of the plan right here. Um. So I wanted to just point out to the board that, uh, was not in your packet. Uh, there is a remand order from the court. And in this packet, not only is the remand order, but there's also a copy of the vote of the town of Norwell and two photos of the access area of the property in question. Um, but I just wanted to read into the record the remand order, which states that the parties report a joint agreement, um, uh, to remand this matter to situat planning board to consider a modified approval under not require, under, excuse me, approval under the subject control law not require reconfiguration of the proposed lots such that lot two has more frontage along Summer Street in the southerly direction, thus capturing all or a portion of the currently existing northernmost driveway on the tract of land that is the subject of the action. Accordingly, this court remands this case to the situat planning board for consideration of said plan who shall determine, shall determine whether the proposed division requires approval under the subject control law. So I just want to point out, that's your remand order, uh, and, uh, the last thing I wanted to say is that the reason why we're sitting here is because last month, uh, the presiding judge on the appeal actions visited the site in preparation for trial. She actually drove her vehicle over this, where the most driveway entrance parked a car, at which point we had a discussion, uh, that the A and R plan can be modified so as to have the driveway entrance be either in a confined, invaded lot, provide actual access. And I'm not gonna characterize her, um, but, uh, she, she then endorsed the way her remand, so it's back to you.
And I have a question because I was not on that vote last time around. So we have a drive, can you just point out to where the driveways are?
Yeah, I definitely might ask that and I actually colored up plan. So. Summer Street is at the bottom. The blue lines are the lines that divide the property. Uh. This here is a wetland in the crosshatch area, the wetland was delineated by the conservation commission. Um. And you can see that there's upland area along the street and then into here on the situat side. This line is the line that is kind of situat above. Situat below is Norwell. The two driveway entrances are here and here. It's like a wish zone.
Yeah.
And the northernmost driveway is here. So what we did is we took this little triangle and we took it from this lot and brought it into this lot. And that's all of this, all that really was done, the only difference. And what that did, because as I'm sure you're aware, when you're dealing with A and R plans, the concern is not access to the billable portion of the lot, but access to the lot from the frontage road. So to the extent that there was a concern that there wasn't enough room to access this lot over here, we added this area that includes the driveway, which now basically confirms the access. So we have the town of Norwell signature, paying great, next that.
I respect you submitting that. I'm submitting that.
Sure.
Excuse me. I respectfully just.
Okay.
And I disagree because you have access in Norwell to Norwell. Where is the access you want to?
It's, it's on the plan, I just showed it to you. In, it's on the plan, I'm on two.
Right, it was right up here through this little triangle, right?
Yeah.
But that is access to Norwell. It is not access to situat.
And we have the planning board from the town of Norwell have endorsed this.
I understand because they endorsed a four A in Norwell.
But the, the court has ordered this board to consider the entire plan and to determine whether the plan shows a subdivision. That's the order of the court. Doesn't say anything about situat. Subject control law doesn't say anything about, you know, what happens in the circumstance where there are A and R plans in two different town, where lots are in two different towns. And this board already signed an A and R plan for this property dividing the land in two different town. So, I'm trying to figure out where you're having a hard time. I understand that this lot is partially.
Yeah. Hundred fifty six. This is twenty twenty five.
The law hasn't changed.
Your access is through Norwell.
It doesn't matter. The question is, is does this plan show a subdivision? Do these lots have, have frontage on a street? This is a street, it's like forty feet wide.
But you are supposed to have access from that.
It doesn't say that in the, in, in this subdivision. It doesn't say that in the, in, in this subdivision control law. Show me where it says that. It says anybody wishing to submit a plan to divide land, which, which is land, well, I'll actually read it. Any person wishing to cause to be recorded a plan of land situated in a city or town in which the subject control law is, is in effect, which this is for both Norwell and Situate, who believes that this plan does not require approval under subject control law may submit his plan to the planning board of such city or town, which we have to both Norwell and Situate, in the manner prescribed. And if the board finds that the plan does not require such approval, it shall forthwith endorse. The board is required, under the order of the court, to review the plan and to determine if the plan shows a subdivision. And if you decide not to endorse, I'm going to ask you to make a determination as to whether, because that's what the court has ordered, whether this plan shows a subdivision.
Again, it has to do with access.
Right. And we have upland access for over a hundred feet on this lot.
May I have our town council respond, please, please? Mr. Bertrault?
Yep. Can you, can y'all hear me and see me? I'm sorry, the lighting's not the best where I am.
That's fine. Thank you. We see you. Thank you.
So yes, the court has ordered a remand. I respectfully disagree with Mr. Delisi and so far as I think he's trying to read more of a characterization into this order than it actually was meant to be. It was an order of remand to consider the new A and R submission. I'll be honest, I don't know that the law is entirely clear as to how we deal with land that's situated in two towns. I think there is some merit to what Mr. Delisi is saying, but I would also note for you that there is a two thousand eighteen decision of the land court where Judge Foster said that towns are limited to considering land that is within their jurisdiction. Now, that case concerned a potential A and R that actually had land in New Hampshire, so it was a little bit different. But the judge said that in considering whether to approve or deny the A and R, they couldn't actually consider the land in New Hampshire. So this is really something that I think is up to the board to decide which direction they want to go. I think there's reasonable interpretations either way, and I'm willing to defend the interpretation either way.
All right, I, thank you. I'm looking at my A and R handbook. And this has to do with determining an A and R endorsement, okay? This is page thirty three and number three says, can each lot accessed onto the way from the frontage shown on the plan? It cannot access this lot. Lot two has to access from Summer Street.
I think that, I.
No, it doesn't. It accesses.
How, how can it access? And what, did you see the photos that I attached to the fact that I just gave you? So how, how can somebody who's driving down Summer Street not be able to access this lot directly from Summer Street, even if that little triangle is not in this? When I was here a year ago, your issue had nothing to do with the sufficiency of the access on the road. It had to do with the fact that there was a common driveway that was accessing the buildable portion out the back. We have, we have wetlands here, but they're interior wetlands. Thirty eight feet, linear feet of the wetland is on the street. The rest of the wetland is not on the street. So then there's an area all up along the left side that is upland, delineated uplands from the Conservation Commission. It's not speculative, it's fact. So how can we not access that? That's part of the lot. Even if we didn't have a driveway in Norwell, how can we not access that?
I drove by that lot the other day and, and it's, I mean, it's, you know, you'd have to jump down three or four feet. It's not accessible, Jack.
And, okay, okay.
You're taking access from
The court.
Norwell across.
It's part of this lot. Does the lot have access? You just read it out of your A and R handbook. Does each lot shown on the plan have access to the street? That's what I'm showing you on this plan.
You are showing me access to lot one. You are not showing me.
I am showing you access to lot two.
Over Norwell.
It doesn't matter. It's part of the lot.
I mean, I gotta agree with him. I, there's gotta be other town, others, properties instead of, but either Situate or Marshfield or Propassid that you're driving across one town to get into the.
Usually that's equivalent.
No, not, 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 not from property, not from town to town. That's not, that's, an easement only goes across, you know, Joe's property.
Well, you all to Tom's.
From, I just agree. It's not a, I, I, I don't, I, there's gotta be.
I'm really upset that you can disagree with this end. Honestly, I've been looking for a long time. You've been on this board for decades. And to not recognize that this has access to a street, we're not even talking like a gravel path or grandfather path that might, or might not be sufficient.
Okay, but my sense, how I interpret this is that that goes to lot.
And you're relying on what language? The plan in front of you, does it or does it not show access from Summer Street to this lot?
To lot. It does not show access. You can't drive up lot two.
The town of Norwell has endorsed the plan.
Care about the town of Norwell. I don't. Where's your, you're pointing it off. Where, where? Right here. I know that. Well, that's, I can't see that. I'm just trying to see if this is.
Yeah.
Because this is the driveway here in Norwell, where it goes that way, yes.
It's easier to see here.
Yes.
And this whole area here is in Situate. It's also part of lot two.
Yes.
So you have this area there and then all along the street, granted, like for like two feet or whatever, but all along the street you have access to the lot there and access to the lot here, all in Situate.
But you can't access this way to there.
But that's the buildable portion of the lot. I mean, Brian will tell you that what we're concerned about is not access back here. It's access to the lot, not to the buildable portion.
Yeah, I will. I, I was gonna, I was gonna jump in anyway. Yeah, that is a correct statement. In terms of subdivision control, we are not concerned with the buildable portion of the lot. The question is solely whether we can access the lot along the frontage. And there are in fact cases where, you know, well, in fact, wetlands can cut off the buildable portion as long as you have vehicular access to the lot itself. That is sufficient.
So you're saying that this is then viable?
What I'm saying is, I mean, I don't want to make a finding for you. You make the ultimate decision. What I'm saying to you is, I think the real issue before you is whether you consider the added frontage in Norwell or not. And I, I sort of gave you a recitation that I think there's arguments either way, so I'm not going to make that decision for you. But if you can actually get on the lot, then you can get on the lot. What we shouldn't be denying or withholding an A and R endorsement for is a belief that, well, the vehicle can, you know, access the lot, but it can't get to the buildable portion or the main portion of the lot. That is something that the courts have told us would be an improper reason to withhold endorsement.
So in other words, because they have this thirty seven feet of an existing driveway, they can in fact access the lot. Is that what you're saying here?
Well, it, in terms of the, the parcel in question, I think it's just a triangle, but yeah, I think a vehicle could probably get on that. There's certainly a driveway there. It's not wetlands. So I think the real question to you is, is whether you think that portion of what is in now in the lot and is in Norwell is within your jurisdiction. And if you think it is, then again, I'm not telling you how to decide, but I think there's probably a, a strong case that, you know, a vehicle can access the lot from that triangle. Hopefully I'm being clear. It's, it's a little bit odd, but it's a little bit of a weird one.
It's definitely a weird one, but the thirty eight feet and you, I think you just mentioned the thirty some odd feet.
Yes.
That, that is the portion that's actually, there's a thirty eight feet over here that's wet. And then there's a hundred and sixteen feet that's dry, of which that one area that still is in Situate is accessible. So even if you have an issue with the fact that the driveway access is in Norwell, despite the fact that Norwell endorsed the plan, you still, you still need to address the fact that there's upland area right next to it in the town of Situate on this lot. And that's something that we really didn't get into at the last meeting because we were so focused on the common driveway and do you need a Situate common driveway to access the buildable portion? We were hung up on the fact that there's wetlands interior between this frontage road and the buildable portion. We didn't focus on that one area really, but it's something that is on this plan in the town of Situate right now.
That was not there before.
It was. It's identical. Greg pointed it out to you, but we got a little off into the weeds. It was exactly that.
You know what, you should do a common driveway.
No, so we have permits. So as far as the buildability, which is irrelevant to this, we have a special permit from the town of Situate, zoning board. We have a common driveway permit from the town of Norwell. We have recorded, executed recorded easement rent and legal access from one lot to the other. We have an order of conditions from Norwell, an order of conditions from Situate. I think there's a prior approved septic design. And we have an approval from the town of Norwell Planning Board too now for their, their role in the A and R process. So we've been to both towns on all issues. Lot one conforms to both Situate and Norwell's zoning. Lot two conforms to Situate zoning for buildable lots and you have a special permit. And I checked with the building inspector since our last meeting, who issued a determination that it's sufficient to utilize a common driveway in Norwell only. That's an issue for him, not this board. But I checked that out for you. And that's what came up. I'm looking for objectivity here.
Well, I'm trying to be objective as well. And as far as I'm concerned, at this point, I suppose it's a new question. Because we've sort of gone around, your access to lot two is basically for all intensive purposes through Norwell.
Not entirely, no.
Stephen, wow.
Love to try to help if I can, just a second. Having a little bit of experience with the boundary line of Situate and Norwell, Situate and Propassid. I mean, I can give you eight examples where lots travel across different line, different town lines. Both square footage in the lots, which you've actually approved some of these plans where half the lots are Situate, half the lots are Norwell. There's some up on Harrison Drive where the access is completely from Situate. All the frontage is from Situate. The houses are in Norwell. It does cross back and forth. It's been done for as long as I've been doing this in Situate. So I don't want to get into the argument with anybody, but I think as far as the formate, it sounds like your issue is the Norwell giving the entrance, not so much that they don't have frontage because they clearly have a required amount of footage for the frontage on Summer Street.
Yes, they do. And then you go south area. Yes, they do.
So if it, if it only boils down to whether or not they're going to access from Norwell or not, that's a zoning issue, not a formate issue. So that would really be up in the building inspector as to whether they need the requirements for the access.
So again, I just, one other thing just popped in my head. Now we have, from time to time, we have land, land swap situations where say there's like a corner of the back of a lot that's going from one lot to the other. And the A and R plan shows like a Z line that it's to be combined with. So like if, if Greg were to close this line off and then put a Z line and say that the Situate lot is to be combined with the frontage of the Norwell lot, how is that any different than two of those being located in the town of Situate? It's just that we don't have a solid line between these two. I can put a solid line between these two. It would be perfunctory. It's the same thing. We're combining the Situate portion with the Norwell portion, which does have frontage, just like in those other circumstances, we combine a Situate portion with another Situate portion that does have frontage. It's really, there's different ways to look at it and I kind of feel like the spirit of the purpose of the, of the subject control law is being met. And that is to ensure safe access and the plan that's in front of you does that.
So if you have rights, but you're not having direct access. That's what you're saying, right?
No, I believe that we do have direct access in Situate, but the existing driveway that's shown on this plan, which is in lot two, happens to be Norwell. Despite that, we still have direct access to the lot, which in and of itself requires an endorsement.
Okay. Well, we're going to run into this open more again. So we should go to the property, right?
Say again?
Is the which field sell your property? We're going to run into this over and over again, right?
You, you endorsed the A and R plan of the which field property, which had the exact same scenario, creating a buildable lot.
Uh huh, exactly. But the back portion was in Norwell, the front portion was in Situate.
Yeah, please, pardon.
I'm just trying to just be able to play.
Yes, certainly. Well, I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to be transparent. So I'm ready to state what you're calling us.
Well, I'm ready to endorse. I, I don't think that it has to have. It has access, so I'm prepared. It's got no frontage, just access.
I'm just.
I don't hear that that access is in Norwell. I think that happens all the time here. And I know that, I know Harrison, or whatever, Pierreson Drive divided front of the.
It's the same thing that I'll demonstrate with one judge's help.
I'm not familiar with that.
Those big houses that have Situate phone numbers? They just up the road.
I don't get what I'm saying.
I run the cars. With speed limit twenty five miles an hour.
Laurel would drive is another example.
Right. We all know Laurel.
I didn't mean to say the dirty words.
Wait, not talking about Laurel, like everyone said.
But that was a situation where two planning boards endorsed the same subdivision.
But you do understand my concerns.
I understand your concerns, but I'm hoping that you also understand my points.
And you, and you spoke.
Speed of strength, man.
And you spoke with Mr. Vogel about this, but he told you that it's that way.
I, I, what Mr. Vogel said was that when you, when you look at this plan, the this side over here where the house is located is, has no wetlands all up in this area. Okay? So there's already like a path cut in over here to this back portion. And so we propose a common driveway here, which would then provide access to a driveway in this direction and a driveway in that direction.
So one of my problems is if I try to find what I air goes.
So one of my problems is if I can't, if I go by there, I can't see there, rather the driveway. So that's, but if I can get it from above, I'm sure we can see that way.
Yeah. Whether it's, whether it's existing or not, the common driveway would be down here. And so the zoning decision in Situate literally said that this lot, which they approved, was to be accessed by a common driveway out of Norwell, which was exactly what was obtained because the property is in Norwell. And the common driveway has to be in Norwell because of the fact that there's all these wetlands here. So he applied the bylaw that was within his jurisdiction and said you're not required to have a common driveway in Situate, required to have a common driveway. But the town of Norwell has jurisdiction over it up for the same reason that you're talking about your jurisdiction here. I'll stop talking. That, that's, so I have a written decision, it's part of the litigation. But the judge isn't gonna consider it. Why? Because zoning issues and access to, to buildable portions of lots are completely irrelevant for this topic, for this purpose. It was just contextual background information to demonstrate to the judge that we have like six permits for this property. She walked it, too. She didn't care if I was.
I think she cared if you applied earlier as well.
Well, the reason why we didn't is because last year when we were here, Lot One was unbuildable, was, there was, there was, there's been a zoning change since, since last year in the town of Norwell, which allowed us to take that land, otherwise we needed it in order for that lot to be, um, not rendered,
Unbuildable.
Uh, not unbuildable, because there already is a house on it. In order for that lot to not be rendered, nonconform, illegal. So now that the zoning change occurred, we had this ability to take that land without rendering it nonbuild, or nonconform. There, there, there was a reason. There was something that we hadn't noticed until after the, the bylaw changed in Norwell.
And you do a charter board, let it exist, you go straight now.
Obviously, I'm in the minority, so.
I don't think you're in the minority, I, I thought it was a concern about the usage of orange shit, I, I still heard that, too. And a lot of the access, like, totally different, though the bylaw was changed.
But it's changed in Norwell.
It's changed in Norwell. Not so much for us.
Which gives us the ability to underground this access, this actual, existing.
And I, I find it fascinating that someone would reveal with you a rendering without a permit.
It happens all the time in what's called fifty-foot frontage lots. So, um, ordinarily, you require a hundred feet of frontage on the road. The zoning board by special permit could allow a lot to have a dwelling constructed on it so long as it has double the requirement of upland in zoning districts. And, um, a, a upland zoning, and it, it could then have fifty to a hundred feet, uh, frontage.
And just before I read this, yeah, you just put them.
Yep.
You're gonna, and this is still a week, five from the weeds on the common driveway, okay? When you build this lot in Situate, will it be Situate's common driveway? Are you going to come back to Situate with the common driveway?
I haven't looked at that because we haven't, we don't need, why would we need to do that? If we have a determination.
I mean, not that, I'm not, not that I'm gonna dismiss that, but this allocation.
Uh, I'll be ready to say enough, as soon as I have it. I move to endorse as a protocol on the subdivision control will not require the planned land in Situate mass and roll on mass. A program not require division of land, one sixty-five and zero, rip, Summer Street, Situate subdivision, practical twenty-three dash one, dash thirty-eight F, and twenty-four dash two, dash forty-nine B, and zero, Summer Street, Norwell assessment capacity, and dash one, now three A, it is a public twenty-nine, couple four five, a J C spot, special lands surveyor of earth engineering, with the application owner, Alex Equity Partners LLC, as the division of land is not a subdivision because every lot shown in the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required by the Situate zoning bylaw on the public way of Summer Street. Here is adequate frontage on Summer Street for both lots and a common driveway in Norwell, and an access and utilities that provide for driveway to Lot Two providing access. The driveway to Lot Two across Lot One would be a common driveway under the Situate zoning bylaw. A fifty-foot frontage lot has been granted by the Situate zoning board. Please, the Norwell Plan Board has issued a permit, the common driveway to Norwell. Plan Board endorsed the notice plan, it's not a termination, as to the cost of the sale of the project.
So I have to ask, is, are you imposing the condition of approval of this plan that requires us to get a common driveway in the town of Situate despite the fact that the building inspector has, and I would ask you to ask your counsel whether you could condition that? Because that's a matter that's outside of purview of this, of, of this entire application.
Mr. Bertrand?
So, yeah, the common driveway permit isn't part of the subdivision approval. Um, so no, we should not issue a condition on that. Um, you know, that said, should you decide to endorse tonight, that wouldn't in any way waive the town's rights to enforce a common driveway permit down the road if the town believed that it had jurisdiction over that.
That's my problem.
But, you know, at this point, we should not be sort of blurring the two things. They are different areas of the law.
Because we cannot condition a form A, I know that.
Okay, it just sounded like, it sounded like the motion required the common driveway permit in Situate. I think it's just a motion to endorse because there's adequate access to each lot for the distance required by zoning. That's what the law requires.
Okay, so this needs to, um, driveway to Lot Two across Lot One, we need a common driveway and a Situate driveway. I think we need to eliminate that.
Yes, yes.
Okay? Point? Is it amended, is it amended?
On my favor?
Uh, alright.
Thank you very much. Um, I appreciate it. Thank you, Brian.
My law. Open, you know, business, thorough waters, thorough water. So I think you could put a development report, you have a lot up here. The fighting meeting, yeah, we'll be there, a public twenty-third, there will be a public hearing. It's six thirty of the stormwater regulation revision draft. And online copy of distribution of codes of online, planning board website, at five o'clock this, our child work and daily bodies. We will expect the multi-period, we at seven ninety-nine, the long country play to be on an upcoming agenda. Paving by October on the seaside will happen at the end of the week of October, we'll keep. Ms. Joseph from the period view, when you conduct the site visit to review the conditions for the paving. Paving in special will happen in both the morning and afternoon of the project. And I don't wanna amend that, Charlie will be in there, I'm never, ever gonna use those rocks again as, as part of the.
You mean the chief?
The chief, they're never gonna use those to get in any project, ever, ever again.
They're horrible.
They're horrible, and they, they, they recognize that now, and they showed us to us at the, at the, at the council, said that we felt that worry.
Why don't they replace them?
Got a customer's money. Ms. Joseph attended the pre-construction meeting they had with school, the groundbreaking, uh, was on Monday. I, I can put down that nobody in the planning board was invited to go to the groundbreaking. Ms. Joseph thinks that a water truck definitely needs to be outside at the stage one entrance to control the dust. There will be no work on October thirteenth. The traffic board needs to be truly not communicating more clearly to truck drivers, the district, and the town. The O P M is, is a little reticent in, um, communication with that jury. When you were in that meeting, we can, that was kind of communication that the O P M was done, was like, didn't carry enough information, and, and talking to them. And, um, we see trucks all over the town, so we need to keep our trouble there. The water truck complaint is obviously true, it could be featured during Columbia Columbus State of Holiday. And they have extended hours for the concrete floor, because they just started, but they will get it back. So that will happen. If you have any, you, you want to.
Okay, uh, motion, I approve the following purchase orders, number two, six oh, three, two, six oh, in the amount of eleven thousand, one thousand, one thousand dollars to David Larson for return of the amortment funds for eighteen to place. Uh, number two, six oh, three, two, four, one, in the amount of fifty thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars, sixty-two cents, to David and Lisa Larson for return of surety funds, plus interest for eighteen to place. To, number two, six oh, three, two, six three, in the amount of six hundred dollars, the peer review of the two stormwater regulations. And two, six oh, three, two, six five, in the amount of two thousand, three hundred, for a stormwater peer review and report regarding multiple detention project in eighteen Manhole Road. Done?
On my favor?
I move the minutes, uh, September twenty-fifth. Twenty twenty-five.
Second.
On my favor?
I give my hand.
So, did anybody with names on? No, I did, um, I did. Uh, with conservation, I live with the conservation. That means I get a long hour, it's such a problem. And, yeah, we're continuing, the last project was, um, Marshfield, as a permit. The Marshfields, you know, the quadros in, in, well, central Marshfield, other ones. Um, it's Marshfield or whatever, um. These, these are water, these, Marshfield, right, and it's settled out, yes?
The A D U?
No, no, no.
Which one, the Marie?
This term, Marie.
Oh, twenty-one Central and seven Marshfield, I.
So, um, there's a clarification among the conservation community, and they have, um, continued that we gotta get, until they can get, uh, some further clarification. But the interesting point was, man, I was, Mr. Pritchard was here because they say that they met the leave of requirements and Mr. Pritchard wants to see those. And riding, so if anybody was to saw a meeting, you wouldn't wanna know that next time come, Mr. Pritchard's here to watch, could, uh, the things that came. You know, waiting for some kind of jurisdiction along, which no makes it to the border, so.
Right.
Nothing that's anything about, yes. Um, other than that, um, you, nothing came from C P C?
Um, they haven't met, they don't, they're still, uh, re-providing, those are, they're supposed to meet. Is this seventh Monday?
Oh, yeah.
So I'll show it to them.
Anybody have anything else to say? A motion to adjourn?
So, go ahead.
On my favor?
Aye.
Aye.